Are you willing to serve on it again, Lauren?
Lauren Colas.
Second, all in favor, please say aye. Appointment's in Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA. Now this one, um, that's not the right letter. That's not the right letter.
I don't remember getting that letter for that one.
Well, no, it should be good.
It's been a while since your staff there contacted Steve.
Which staff?
I don't know.
Oh, who, who is it now?
You guys should've got an email to look at.
I'm confused, because I think it was Jack Begley.
Oh, yeah.
Damn it, it's supposed to be from the APC.
This is a citizen member of this member of the APC. Well, remember, we put Jack on it because we thought we could appoint Jack. Then there was a conflict with him not being on the other board.
This person used to be on the APC to be able, eligible to be on the BZA.
Okay.
This is Al Spa.
Oh, yeah.
Citizen member of it that's already on the APC.
Can you come up to the, please?
Mr. Area Plan Director.
I wish her name remained anonymous. So this position is Al's hold spot, which is a citizen member of the area plan commission that will also.
So do you have a recommendation?
There's only four that can, it can be. We don't have anybody. Camden will appoint someone for Ross Lurin position as vacant. Anita Worling, Brad Farrar, and Mr. Jeff Watson. Those are the citizen members that are not appointed. So.
There's one open of three that are actually appointed already.
That could be.
That could be, yes. Brad has expressed that he's not interested. Anita is, she doesn't know enough about it. She said she's not sure, um, not knowing. She'd like to know more about it. So she didn't say no. Um, Anita. Um, I could not find Mr. Watson last week, but he is present today. And then Camden will vote their member, is it tomorrow's meeting? Whenever they have their meeting, they, and they told me at their last.
That'd be Wednesday.
That they have someone in mind, so it can be those forces. But they have to be a member of the APC. This is the citizen member position that's also going to be on the APC.
Well, I'm sorry, Jack.
No, that's understandable.
So you want to table some of the other persons?
We've had this in the force for a while. Mr. Jeff Watson, are you wanting to, would, would you be willing to serve on this board?
Yes, I would.
You would? So we have one of the three of the, oh, I hear you. My opinion is I'd like to have Jeff on.
All right.
Lauren, can you go?
I just thought maybe we'd give a chance for the new person coming in. Jeff's here and one of them.
Jeff's had at least a year on board there, now or maybe two to, to, uh, as you say, to learn what the position is about. Yeah. Oh, yeah, you gotta go up to the podium, I'm sorry.
When you appoint somebody in the health department, you get a doctor or something like that, you gotta understand this has got something to do with contractor. I'll step aside if you want to, but contractor needs to fill this position. Somebody's into building trade, because it's related to the area plan. The best person we had there for years is Pat Baker here. He reassessed both sides of the coin, and he was able to get a lot of these jobs done nobody else could. But it needs, I'm really sincerely, both positions need, are need contractor both boards. Somebody is in the business, because this has got to do with a lot of contractor business, development business. And I'll step aside if you want to find someone else, but I think you need to find somebody that's in the trade. There needs to be one person in the trade. There, there are always people out here that don't know much about this, making decisions. It's got a lot to do with the contracting business and the development business in the community. Well, lots, housing, whatever you got to do. And that's in my opinion. But I'll step aside if you can find, but I think you need to find somebody in the trade. Just like the health department finds a doctor in the trade.
Right. The only difference is that the hea, the health department is, has a statute where mandated by the legislature. It tells us who we have to have, where the area plan doesn't, but it's, I think you're right. It's wise to follow the same type of a philosophy. Well, as I stated before, I'm in favor of Jeff taking the position, so. Does anybody like to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion from Steve to appoint Jeff to the, Jeff Watson to the board. I have a second by Lauren. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jeff, you just put your neck in the noose there. We appreciate both of you being willing to step forward on this. You, I think, I've talked about this so much, I think everybody knows that I, I have a real problem with, uh, the way that area plan is set up by statute. And that is that, uh, they're not elected, and they have power over everybody in the county's property. And I do, do not think that's right. I think that, uh, uh, they're appointed by different boards, so that no one board is responsible for it. There's nobody to go to above them. Now, the, the only recourse to that is that before they can make any change in, uh, in the zoning law, it has to come before us to the rest. But, but management of the agency, hiring of the people, uh, setting the salaries, uh, setting the hours, defining what that the, uh, what that those statutes say is all on that non-elected board. And I don't like that. I, I think it should be, all power should rest with the people. I would rather see it set up in a different way, but I think we should reserve that for another discussion.
Working inside the area plan is really important to the history makes.
Oh, I don't have any problem at all with who we have as zoning director and all that. And I know that most people have a, uh, feel more comfortable with zoning rules. Now, as I've stated before, some of the fastest growing, most, uh, influential, uh, having the best economy areas in the nation have United Building Homes, like Houston, Texas. But. Huh?
It was space.
Yeah. Yeah. Was it, there's some show on TV about Texas that said it's bigger than California, Maine, and someplace else altogether. So they're driving across, if you realize the vastness of Texas. Okay.
While we're on area plan still.
Yeah.
The director did wish to move his office. Make it more convenient for the citizens of Carroll County. Especially the elder, when you come upstairs to start your permit, to go downstairs and do their offices and come back up. I mean, he suggested maybe where community corrections is. In that portion. Then we can turn his room into the break room.
The only problem with that is the ladies restroom does not open off the break there. I don't know if that's a big deal. We're not, not being a lady using the ladies restroom, I don't know. It is designed down there. Originally, the, what we called the lounge down there, that lady became, later became community corrections, was the Grand Army of the Republic room. Uh, I, I think it was, uh, the health department was reserved for one group and the lounge reserved for another group back then. I know that the Grand Army of the Republic, which would be the GAR, the veterans of civil war, the one or, one of the two groups. I look on the old plans, I love those, the old plans of the courthouse. Knows you a lot about why I think for them, really. Anyway, I, he has spoken to me about that too, and that, that is a, uh, I like that kind of an idea and coming forth with that kind of a proposal, because that's showing me that he's interested in serving the people and making it better for them by having offices that are together, so that it's more of a one-stop, easy-to-do. People are not so inconvenienced by having to come in, and I like that. So they have to leave from you and go to the surveyor, do you think?
Correct. They go to the surveyor and also the assessor's office to get a property card.
Wait, wait, to what office?
The assessor's office.
Assessor, a load of, both downstairs.
And then for new residential, they also have to go to the health department to get a, uh, store.
Which is also downstairs.
There's potential of three stops that's all downstairs, yes.
That's interesting. Nobody's ever pointed that out.
There's also a stop for the auditor's office, so if we have a split, we have to send them to the area plan. So.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Would you have gone with it?
Yes, we did.
You have, by the time you get one or two people in his office, and I mean, send it where it's three, four people. I, I go hard with it. You could use them in your office. Plus, that office space was also shared with, uh, for the recorders of all their books and that.
That's still in there?
Because it was with Mr.'s office.
Yeah, we had our office in there for quite a while, and it was underutilized. But I thought when we moved out, the recorder moved their stuff out too, so I think it, it used to be microfilmed back in there.
She has a story chairy of the second office that they both use it, right? We use it too?
Yes.
They're moving to the third floor in a room between the home and the circuit court. Hold on, you're. Yes, and Mr. Shadley was voted to be the chair of that.
Home has not been approved yet, because they, I have not received a revised, um, such a, nothing is in, um, just what I've been told, and I don't have any.
Curtis got off the copy at the Christmas party, but if you want to know, you just put the tip of the wall. Which I don't think someone willing to do that is going to hurt.
I like that idea. Well, thank you for bringing this back up. We need to make a decision on this and let it mull over a hour or two. We still have the problem, guess we're gonna have to move you down there too.
She needs to build basement.
Basement?
In cage.
I'm sure all the citizens would love it.
And what happens with the walkers? We make a breakdown? So we really, I don't know. Do we got a desk in there?
I, yeah, most of the time I sit right here, if you're anywhere. Okay. Let's think that over, Steve. Keep after us about that. Really, it's easy for us to say, okay, we'll think that over, and then the time passes and we haven't made any action. I don't want that to happen. Any other business? Is that what we're down to? Yes.
Back, yes, a point clarification on the appointment to the redevelopment commission.
Yes.
Uh, we looked at the code here, and it is a commissioner's appointment. It does have to be, it's an advisor. Uh, it is not a voting member of the rebuild commission. They do not receive their hand, they do not, uh, they are merely attend the meetings and, and offer their, uh, advice.
Okay.
And it is, but it is a point that's moved by commissioners.
So, yeah, so if I'm understanding this completely, that means that if the school board has somebody they would like to have represent them there, they have to put the name up to us.
They don't have to, but it's like other appointments, you know, you have recommendations that you receive, you like to know who they want.
Okay. Okay.
And back to that resolution, I think it was wrong one, that's, that's the only thing that I got.
Okay, so we can do this one right now. Resolution of Carroll County Board of Commissioners pertaining to 2020 meeting schedule.
Resolution number 2021.
Yeah, 202001, right.
It's adopting the schedule which you previously voted on at the year-end meeting.
And that we corrected here just a little bit.
And the only thing it adds is, it adds the year-end meeting, which is December 30th, so that that can be done as a regular meeting. It doesn't have to be, uh, the auditor doesn't have to know this will be a special meeting. You can change these at any meeting, at, at any time. But the statute requires you to adopt a resolution by adder before first meeting.
Motion for resolution 2021. 202001.
Okay. Have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution number 202001, which pertains to the meeting schedule. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How are your folks today? You have something you'd like to bring up?
Yes, I do.
Well, we'd like to hear it.
I think you know who I am, but do I need to announce who I am for you?
It'd be kind of nice.
You did for this. Well, I'm Pat Robertson. I'm concerned about a natural creek that flows through our property. Mr. Shapley reported to the newspaper that no one had contacted him concerning the creek. And yes, he may not realize that he did call it a creek at the time. But he said no one had contacted him following, concerning the creek that flows through the property on 600 North in Tepicano Township. Well, I guess maybe we must be nobody, because we did contact him and we spoke to him about it. Our visit with him was interesting. Someone had convinced him that a natural creek is a ditch. We are aware of the fact of a ditch called Mitchell Ditch. Did drain into the natural creek at one time. I'm not certain that it still does, but I do not believe, even if it does drain into the creek, that the natural creek should be called a ditch. In the past years, the creek has been studied and recorded in Indianapolis. It is officially called Squall Branch, and all the details are on the internet. The website details exactly where the creek flows. I recognized it even had a photo of our house as it showed where the creek flowed through our property. And the facts are that the website identifies it as a creek, and it is named. The creek is documented, and the website shows exactly where the creek flows, on the north side of the road, crossing the road into the northwest corner of the wildlife sanctuary that's on 600. It flows westward into the neighboring property, then it winds further westward, flowing through our property, then it angles south, southwest, as it runs on its way down to the Tepicano River. The creek is documented where it entered and exited each property along the way, all documented by the state of Indiana. And I find it very difficult to comprehend why the drainage department is calling a documented natural creek a ditch. A natural creek is not a ditch, and we should never have to pay a ditch tax for a natural creek flowing through our property. Now, what could be the reason that the drainage board would call the creek a ditch? Well, I guess so they can slap a ditch tax on it, and so they can also destroy it by reaming it out. It is not a ditch, and I want to know why this is being allowed to happen. Mr. Shapley took great pride in explaining to us how he plans to dredge it out, it out, all the way to the Tepicano River. I repeat, he takes pride in describing how he plans to destroy a natural creek. If this is allowed, every property owner in this country that has a natural creek flowing through their property will pay a ditch tax. As the leaders of this county, we must never allow a natural creek to be destroyed, much less you should never allow the drainage board to charge citizens for a natural creek that flows through their property. That's all I have to say.
Okay, so let me ask you a question.
Okay.
What specifically action are you wanting us to take?
I do not believe anyone who has a natural creek flowing through their property should have to pay a ditch tax on it. That's my first concern. The second concern I have is it seems that the drainage board is pretty excited about getting in there and dredging out a natural creek. And I see no reason for the county to pay them to destroy a creek. And I guess that's, that's exactly where I'm standing.
Okay. Has there been? I have only a vague knowledge of your, how that creek runs down to you there everywhere. You know, I, I know where we're talking about, I know where you live, I know where the creek goes around your house, you know. Isn't there tiles that come into that creek above you?
On the north side, the water seeps out of the ground and flows. I, there is no visible evidence that the water that is seeping out of that ground is coming from a ditch anywhere.
Remember the guy did the pond building?
Yeah, it has to do with that pond and everything up there, doesn't it?
Pardon?
Wasn't there a pond up there that was made and destroyed?
I believe there is. I believe, I've never been up there, but I believe that there is.
Didn't there documentation back in what, nine, what was the documentation, 19, early 1900s? It was recorded through the courts that it was a regulated drainage, they asked to have petition to be a regulated drainage.
Yeah, I think the drainage board actually inherited that from the courts, where the judge had ruled that was going to be a drain.
Because property owners at that time wanted it to be maintained.
The people at that time who owned property wanted it to be a drain? Please tell me when that was.
Do you have the documents? Like, she has copies of the documents when it was put on maintenance.
What, what year was it?
Whatever, I don't remember. It was early 1900s, I believe. The one I gave you a copy of in the progress office.
We have been there since 1954. We have never been presented the question as to whether or not we want that creek to be called a ditch.
Ted, when, when did drainage boards come about?
The current boards came about 1965, 65. Prior to that, uh, regulated drains were under the Indiana Code, and these statutes have since been superseded by the 1965 drainage code, which is what we operate under now. The statutes was existed prior to 1965. I don't know, I don't remember what time they were initiated, but I think they went back in the late 19th century. About the time that, uh, counties started regulating roads, the courts were given the function of, uh, of doing, having the decisive role in, in regulated drains, because people were wanting better drainage, and they had to have some authority that allowed somebody to drain across somebody else's property, and that logical authority was the court. So they were all regulated by the courts, who, uh, they're, they appointed drainage commissioners, uh, the courts did. In other words, the courts didn't want to go out and look at, uh, drains and all that. So they would appoint, I'm not sure if they appointed more than one commissioner for each drain, or if they appointed a panel, but at any rate, uh, there were commissioners appointed. And the way that your property became a regulated drain was to petition the court. So, uh, the drainage records that are in the surveyor's office that show the court ditches, we call them court ditches, uh, those were initiated by the property owners who were benefited or affected by those drains. And they included, uh, natural waterways. So that's how it came to be that natural waterways became, uh, regulated drains. They're subject to regulation. There are some pretty large ones. The, the creek that goes through the city of Frankfurt, it used to, you know, back in the 1800s, you had to ford it to get down, uh, Wallet Street. You, you went down into the water and then on out of town. Uh, it was dredged back in the teens, like 1914, 1960. And so it became quite deep, it's got quite deep size, but it was originally something that you could fool, so. So dredging of natural waterways is also sub, becomes subject to Department of Natural Resources, uh, regulation. When they exceed certain length, 10, 10?
10 miles.
10 miles. So if a natural waterway exceeds, a ditch exceeds 10 miles, uh, including a natural waterway, then Department of Natural Resources is involved. They have to review plans for doing anything to the regulated drain. But the, the term ditch is what we call it, but regulated drain can include a natural waterway. And it does in this case as well. So it was created by petition of the owners who wanted the court to make it so that, uh, that people were willing to improve their property, improve the productivity of, of their land, so they had a, a way to improve, make improvements that, that would cross other people's lands, a legal procedure where, uh, where somebody could come in and do work legally on somebody else's property, basically.
So she said she had the land after this was done. Is that my understanding?
54, which.
54, so back in 1955, she should have been notified by whoever she bought it from, that was a regulated ditch. You have even paid taxes on there since then?
We just put a ditch tax on it this year.
They come in off, off and on assessment over the years, but the records that are in the surveyor's office are the official record of whether or not it's a regulated drain or not.
And it's a regulated drain.
And wouldn't have, there would be no way that it came on to being a regulated drain without landowners asking.
That's correct. Under old law or new law.
And may I ask, would all the landowners through which the creek flowed have to be in agreement?
No. It's a, it's a majority vote thing.
Of the judge deciding.
The judge decided.
Yes. He heard all, anybody that objected to it, if they objected to having their creek dredged, then they had, they had a tape, they had, they could come before the court like they do now on the board.
When did that occur here?
What?
What he's just describing, when did that occur on that creek?
The judge ruling?
Yeah.
The judge ruling and all of that, when did that occur?
It was when they made it a regulated drain, back in the 1900s. I want a paper, I gave you a copy of it, I don't know.
Now, I know you showed me something that had Mitchell, Mitchell ditch on it, I believe, but it flowed into the Squall Creek. You were showing that to me when I stopped in your office. Now, if a ditch flows into a natural creek, does that mean that the natural creek is now a ditch?
Yes. It, it is also a creek.
Okay.
Berry Creek still retains its name, just as your creek, whatever its name is, it's still a creek. It's both, it's both a creek and it's a regulated drain.
I live on a creek that's a regulated drain.
I'm sorry?
I live on, on a creek that's a regulated drain. I pay into maintenance on the, on the creek.
Which is what, what creek is it?
This rock creek.
Rock creek?
I'm in the late seventies, and we pay into, it's a conservancy, it's a conservancy. And I remember going through that process, I was for a game, but, um, it was a federal native property. And, uh, they have, actually, they have right of way through my property, and I can't keep, uh, I can't keep the government out, and I can't put the pens up or anything like that, the stipulations, the land.
You know, something too wrongs never make a right.
Well, I'll tell you what, if it, uh, that wouldn't been done, I probably couldn't live today.
And why?
I probably couldn't live where I live today.
I know that our creek, our creek, our boys played in that creek. It was about this deep. They grew up playing in that creek, and now it's about this deep, and it's raging down through there, tearing out more of our land as it goes through.
That's why I thought there'd been other drains dumped into it ahead of you, above you, because where would that actual water come from?
Coming from that pond up there. Well, there's a, there's a county regulated ditch, it's all tile up there by Yeoman, the J C, my, or, what is that? Climbers or something like that, but it's, it's a big, like eighteen inch tile dumping into that pond, and then it'll close out the pond and runs through the natural, down over the hill into the ditch down below. And I know the county actually has a tile underneath the road, taking care of the springs on the hill there, that runs down the open ditch and dumps into. So there's some water added to it, yeah.
I think really we should probably discuss this in a drainage board meeting rather than...
Yes, I, uh, I do plan to go there. I know they're already set on what they're going to give you the answer, and I think I, I've already gotten that answered prior to this, but that doesn't make the difference.
You still feel like that you shouldn't be paying taxes on a natural?
A natural creek.
Well, that's something we're gonna have to think about, isn't it? That's the way it should be or not.
Been there since nineteen forty seven.
You have been?
One of the home doctors.
Yeah.
With my sister, so, so, but anyway. Uh, you go up around Y O L. And you got, every little, you don't see there, that's not mile, by, you know, underneath the road.
Uh huh.
Next to Ross Park down where we are, and, uh...
So Yeoman all drains past you?
No, not all of Yeoman, yeah.
Okay.
From the Ross Park up in there.
Okay.
And you go back, all the, all the roads that go back, north west. And, uh... Then, uh, now, where I always leave, down on the ground up there, and they run the water all the way. So it's constantly, it's, it's got water in it, when it rains, that creek comes up hotter. Then the Radicop Farm down on the hill on, on the road.
Yeah.
It's, uh, got all kinds of trees and stuff, like, in the ditch. Well, I, I've worked on the road now, through the back, what, I'd, there are kids in there, I mean, used to wear wood, I could not cut any trees down. And people have bought, folks bought, they fall, uh, except the, eleven hundred, whatever it is. Anyway, their yard, from up right to there, eleven hundred. So when, and that, uh, mark on the ground, they just left, left that road, cool, but, uh, from there, I'm not sure. So, uh... I guess I'm late for my call, I guess, anyway.
I know, I wanna hear what you have to say. You know, I'm thinking in terms of, of, of like Wildcat Creek that I live on, uh, I know of several places where it was formerly Ford's where, you know, like, where, none of those are shallow enough now to Ford. They're all three feet deep about all year long, sometimes eight feet deep, nine feet deep. I think there's a lot more water dumped down into there, and it's...
It's in the drain.
Yeah, it's not sitting out here evaporating off in the field, but...
It can come from a long way, so, it's a blockhead, it can come from a long way.
Yeah, it comes from the rain town.
Then all the pasture and stuff that's gone into the farm ground, the, color. Like, you start on six hundred, um, another, all of that, the whole place is colored. Used to be hogs and cattle, hares and horses, horse, cattle.
Well, I, you know, about, on most things, I think right down about the same track as you do on, on things, a very conservative way of thinking, but, and I think this was decided before us. It was decided back there in, uh, by a judge back in, uh, early nineteen hundreds. It hasn't, what, are we putting on a, on a tax on it now?
Yeah, we're putting a ditch assessment on it, starting this next year.
So that's what made it fly up and hit you here, is that there's gonna be a ditch assessment on it. How much will that ditch assessment, uh, picture?
I don't know this that much.
Thirty dollars?
It's the idea. It's the idea of calling a creek a ditch.
Yeah. How much was it now? Thirty dollars, thirty dollars a year.
The principal of it?
Yes. And I think we're losing an awful lot of our principle anymore, and I think it's time for people to stand up and let the, those like you in the offices that can do something to know how we feel about what's going on in this county.
Yeah, I think that's right. I don't know that I'm, the only part is that we're, we're in agreement clear down to the very end, and then I don't know if I agree that it should be not taxed, because there's so many of them around the county that are taxed the same way.
Well, maybe so many of them were also...
Wrong?
Wrong.
I pay tax on a ditch that I don't even know where it is, you know, uh, it's somewhere out there, there's a drainage tile that...
I started the new one in Camden, I don't know even close to.
Did you pay on it?
It's on the other end of town.
Well, I hate to keep dragging along, but nobody's going to convince me that this creek is a ditch, and nobody is going to convince me that I should be happy paying a ditch tax.
We appreciate that, I like that spirit.
Well, you might not like it when they throw me into jail, because I have to pay them.
Wait till we get the new one, then we'll wait till...
That'll be nicer, jail in the future, you don't wanna go in the old jail. Anything else to come for the board?
How is our van for the board, young lady? Did you get it cleaned?
No, I gotta get the money to do it first, and that has to go through an additional.
Go through what?
An additional, I don't have enough money to get it cleaned, so I can't turn the additional until January.
So what are you gonna use if you have one?
We've been using a van. We've had some. I, I don't have anything else.
Okay, I missed that. You, your question was, what are you gonna do if you have one, and your answer was?
We, we just start using the van.
Do some transfer within your budget, then get it taken care of. Didn't have to ask for additional, that didn't bother you at all, no?
She have some area to transfer from?
We just gotta do budgets.
From the autopsy thing?
Somewhere where you think you can, be up to you, 'cause I mean, it's your budget, council just has to approve it. We just need to get it done.
I agree.
And get it out of the garage. You got it over Florida yet?
No, not till we get it cleaned, I don't wanna expose them to.
Well, the Ubs used to, molly stuff.
No.
Well, see, this is another thing, like, moving of the...
Well, bitch, this sits in there and just gonna keep getting mollyed, so we gotta get it out of there, so at least park it outside.
I think that'd be better, sitting it outside.
I, well, we have it on the charger right now, the, the hood's...
You have an outside outlet, don't you?
That's right.
Plug it in? Is there an outside outlet out, over there to plug it in?
We can't keep it charged if we have, 'cause I can't keep the hood up outside.
If there is one, we probably might be on the backside, we got the, there's only one in the front that big generator, right in there.
I think there'd be a way to run the cord or something, put that hood down, almost all the way down, charging.
I recommend getting it out of there, sooner the better, so, that's all you're gonna, just grow more mold, being in there. That's all I have.
Grow mushrooms.
Grow mushroom. Start growing farm.
I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Aye, so moved.
Motion, second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye. Motion passed, dimly but passed. Thank you. Yeah, we need to sign some appointments.
Both?
Yeah. Um, let me ask, Ted, we did not sign those appointments, we have to do that in an open meeting. So we can pass them back and forth right now, sign them?
I discussed what I...
Congratulations to the board. And you?
I'll be there, send them in and sign them.
Ted, next Monday at one o'clock. It'll be in the papers.
What did you talk to me about before?
Couldn't find me last week, definitely.
Did you have something that was written out to me? Not good at all in my minutes, but some kind of...
Certified appointment.
This thing right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this the one?
Let me go copy it. Well, let me just go copy it.
We got one here, this certificate of appointment for the... Redevelopment board. That's okay. Oh, so this, this still haven't Christians made one?
It's that.
Do you still have the backup ready? Do you still have the backup ready? So what are you gonna do with that?
Ted, I kinda like it when you called it a creek, 'cause that's what I grew up calling them, creeks.
Creeks?
Yeah, thank you.